Daxton? For the flag salute please. For the flag salute, he stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic which stands for nation, of God, middle visible, liberty, and justice for.
Chairman Daxton, Mr. Araca, can I begin? Notice pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act addressing effect of coronavirus measures on the next public meeting consistent with the coronavirus-related restrictions of Executive Order Number 107 given on Saturday, March 21st by Governor Philip D. Murphy, the Board of Adjustment of the City of Patterson will not conduct in-person participation of the public at all future meetings until further notice. However, communication equipment pursuant to NJ SA 10-4-Jay commencing on Wednesday, April 23rd, 2020 at 7:30 PM. Though there may be potentially be a practical need for a limited number of administrative, technical, or other city personnel to be present in or near the council chambers, third floor, City of Patterson. City law is prohibited. Nevertheless, for reasons of compliance with the said Executive Order Number 107, public participation will be available by calling 1-973-321-1579. Meeting number ID is 7116800071. Once again, 1-973-321-1579. Board of Adjustment, regular meeting on Thursday, November 12th at 7:30 PM. On the date and time that the meeting is scheduled to commence, the public may also participate in the meeting by accessing the website of the City of Patterson, www.pattersonnj.gov, and following the email link for the meeting, On Thursday, November 12th, there will be a regular scheduled meeting of the Patterson Board of Adjustment, which will be held at 7:30 PM via webinar session, virtual meeting. The following matters will be heard. Number one, 425 Crooks Avenue LLC, carried from July 23rd, 2020 meeting, 423-425 Crooks Avenue, Block 7706, Lot 10. Application to construct a new two-story mixed commercial residential building. The first floor consists of a small retail service business with two, two-bedroom apartments on the second floor. The apartment will provide onsite parking for seven vehicles, whereas eight parking spaces are provided. For use bulk site can in an R2 zone, is the applicant present?
Applicant's present and ready, madam. Applicant's present, request for adjournment, excuse me.
One moment. Mr. Araca, how do we handle this case?
Do you have your whole calendar?
Okay, thank you. One moment.
That will come back.
Next application, DTF Holdings LLC, 182-188 East 33rd Street, Block 8504, Lot 5. To construct a five-story, 32-unit apartment building on a vacant 10,907 square feet lot. The first floor will contain 32 covered parking spaces. The second through fifth floors will contain four one-bedroom apartments and four two-bedroom apartments per floor for 32 apartments. The applicant is providing 32 parking spaces of the 60 most spaces that are required for use bulk devariances site can in an H1 zone, is the applicant present? There is a letter that was submitted by the attorney, Mr. Araca, that I did send you as well to ask for an adjournment because they would not, they did not comply with the 14th, the 10-day notice to the public. I would like to proceed.
Do you have a date available for that one?
I do, after the agenda. Last one is Mariglen SHEHU, 392-394 River Street, Block 2902, Lot 3. Application to convert a three-family into a four-family dwelling on an irregular lot. The first floor will contain two apartments, one, two-bedroom apartments, and one, one-bedroom apartment. The second and third floors will contain a three-bedroom apartment on each floor. The applicant is providing two parking spaces of the eight spaces that are required, this is for use bulk devariances site can in an M1 zone. Is the applicant present?
Applicant's present, I'm ready to proceed, assuming you are our seventh commissioner.
One moment, please. Mr. Maracanda, would you like to proceed with Crooks Avenue application?
Okay, with respect to number one, that is an application filed by my office. Mr. Douglas King has been handling it for a long time. Uh, there was correspondence.
Maggie, excuse me.
Yes, sir.
You forgot to give the attendance.
Oh, I do apologize for that. Yes, you're correct. One moment, please. I do apologize for not being organized, but it was kind of a little crazy after 7 o'clock trying to get everything done for this meeting at the last minute. So I do apologize for my lack of organization. So I will call the roll. The roll call is as follows. Commissioners, Commissioner Dumas, are you there? Commissioner Furman, are you there?
Present.
Commissioner Hodges?
Present.
Thank you for attending. Commissioner Levine? Okay, Commissioner Rohim?
Present.
Commissioner Minaro?
Present.
Commissioner Levine? Commissioner Watkins?
Present.
Commissioner Levine, are you there, sir?
Yeah, I can hear you now.
I do hear you now. Thank you for your attendance. And Chairman Daxton?
Right here.
Okay. So, Mr. Maracanda, on Crooks Avenue, you want to proceed with an adjournment?
Right, there was a request for Mr. Douglas King's on behalf of my office, jointly with Mr. Simon, who represents the objectors.
This is my issue, commissioners and chairman, for all my commissioners. Now, this, this matter has been carried from January 24th, 2019. We're going into another year, and it continues to be carried for many reasons. But at this time, there should be something that should be done that we can all get into cooperation with, with the COVID-19 guidelines for the City of Patterson, that this should be heard and Chairman Daxton as well explained to your commissioners that there is a, also, they were not present at the time with the transcript that was dated. One moment. January 9th was the testimony. So unless I understand this correctly, they haven't received it. So if this is going to proceed with new commissioners that were appointed in July, they should have that as well. Unless this is going to be changed to something new, I don't know. So, Mr. Araca, how would you like to address this matter?
Mr. Araca, if I may, I was trying to finish my thought there. Um, again, Mr. King and Mr. Simon started this case, as you may recall, there was some sense of testimony, and there were, there was also a great deal of testimony to continue. Um, I have no objection whatever date the board might set, uh, just that we thought it was unrealistic for it to be heard, you know, on the virtual mechanism, but whatever the board decides, uh, we will certainly abide by. And the transcript might...
Yeah, well, let's, let's, let's start with the transcript, the date is mandatory, because we have new commissioners.
Yeah.
So that has, that, that has to be done, right? We, we agree on that, correct? Okay.
Yes.
Um, and I do know, and I do remember that this matter was one that I think everybody involved, including myself initially, thought was not appropriate virtual. Having said that, I, I don't know when we first said that. When we anticipated being live again. And, you know, based on the recent spike, I, I, I don't know when that's going to be.
I hear you.
Um, so what I think we should do is, uh, we're going to adjourn it. I mean, it's going to get dragged. I don't think we have a date around the corner anyway, so we'll put it out a little bit of time. I think, I think everybody's going to have to be prepared to move it one way or the other on that, on that date. Um, with transcripts.
I understand.
Hopefully, hopefully it would be live, but I, I don't know that's realistic.
I just, as a secretary and to this board and to the, through the chair, am I correct in saying this, Chairman Daxton, we just discussed this earlier, that if I continue to put this person on and it keeps getting carried, someone's losing a space. So I'd like to bring this matter in May, if I may, or April 23rd, but it has to be heard at one time or another. Because every time you carry it, someone else doesn't get heard. And because of the COVID, I don't even know if in March we'll be able to hear it. But to me, on, you know, realistically speaking, and on behalf of my commissioners, I think that we really need to put this case on.
To, 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 to April date, to, to April date.
That's fine, that's fine, that's fine.
Now, you do have another case on there, April 23rd, Mr. Maracanda. Happy hands, right? Daycare, is that yours?
What did you call?
Happy hands and hearts, daycare center?
No.
Okay, so, until I do know that, I'd like to check my calendar, Chairman Daxton, if I may.
Go ahead.
Mr. Maracanda, Gary Paparosi, uh, also, if this is not going to be heard even in April, uh, maybe give me some forewarning because my original report was dated 12/13/2018.
Yep.
But my report is already two years old, so I think I have to re-inspect. I don't know if there's anything, any other issues. But I, I, I should, but I don't want to re-inspect it and it's going to get carried another season, so I sort of want to inspect sometime close to here.
Right.
So if you have an April date and you know it's not going to get heard, uh, 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 like to shoot me a review.
Not a problem. I also heard that there was discussion about revised plans, so if they, if they are being done, I'll get them through right away. The good thing is, the site is a relatively simple site, even though it's become quite a contested matter, actually. So hopefully we'll get you any revised plans right away as well.
Great, okay, thank you.
Okay, so, Mr. Paparosi, I just want to make this clear for myself. If you're, if he's going to send you the attorney or the applicant revised plans, that mean that this, um, transcript is null and void because now you have to do a new review.
I don't think the transcript is null and void at all. It may, if revisions are not, revisions are not complete modification of the project, so the transcript is irrelevant, in my opinion.
Oh, just, yeah, listen. We're the transcripts, we're not going to predetermine whether it's starting anew. We're the transcripts, you're going to do a review, and then we'll go from there. I mean, there is a capable testimony, I'm not looking to reinvent the wheel here for one half.
I, I don't think we're going to need to re, to reinvent the wheel, I agree with that.
I'm not reinventing the wheel, I just wanted to turn, that's all. So, including, um, no, I have, Mr. Maracanda, no, uh, May 6th. The 23rd is not going to work, but May 6th, 2021. Would you like to have that date?
That's fine, all schedule requirements are waiting through that date.
Thank you. The matter of 423-425 Crooks Avenue has been carried to May 21st, 2021 at 7:30 PM.
I believe you said May 6th.
Oh, I'm sorry, I wrote the wrong date, May 6th.
Okay. If anything changes, I will advise you right away.
Thank you. The next case for, give me one second. I hear you. Anyway, Mariglen Shehu, is that right? S-H-E-H-U? Is River Street or DTF Holdings, which would you like to proceed with, Mr. Araca?
I want to adjourn this River Street, that's the only one I have.
Yes, but I'm asking Mr. Araca, how does he want to proceed?
We've got to address the matter, the adjournment request, so we, we've got to get to that matter.
Thank you. On DTF Holdings LLC, uh, 182-188 East 33rd Street. Um, the issue was that I sent him the list of property owners to the attorney, and he did not notify in time. This is why the case cannot be heard. He was also in agreement, your attorney is Charles Sarlo. And, uh, because he did not notify, this is why this case will not be heard this evening. One second, please.
Secretary, whatever the date, whatever the date is, please notice, uh, please advise Mr. Sarlo tomorrow that he has to notice the date, the seemingly doesn't constitute notice that you didn't send out there where he don't notice.
I spoke with him about that. I think that until I get it in writing, I did send him an email on, on, uh, let's see. Okay, can I go up and run before I can speak to my chairman, please? Couple minutes?
Everybody need their mic, everybody need to mic it out.
Chairman Daxton, can you mute your mic, please? Can you mute your mic, Chairman Daxton? Uh, Chairman Daxton? In discussion, um, DTF Holdings, 182-188 East 33rd Street will be carried to March 11th, 2021, and will notify, re-notify again all the 200 feet, the list of property owners.
Okay.
Yes, sir. We can proceed, Mr. Chairman Daxton and Maracanda. Mr. Maracanda? Please mute your microphone, I'm going to the lobby, but television's off. Every meeting should be of all the people for speaking, out of respect for the public and each other, thank you. Mr. Mariglen Shehu, do you have another thing, another device on?
Who's number, whose number is the number that ends in 78? Whoever's number that is that ends in 78, please mute the mic, and try to figure out where he's calling the phone. Thank you. I tried it now. Are you sure you have anything else there, phone, is there anything else?
The, the issue with the iPhone's coming from Mariglen Shehu. I'm not sure what kind of device, if you have two devices on, or, um, but that's what it is, there's an echo coming from, from that connection.
Maybe, maybe it's the phone. Alan, maybe you're, you're calling as a phone line as well. And you're getting an echo.
Yeah, that might be the issue.
It seems to be two devices for Mariglen.
Um, you might want to disconnect and reconnect.
Out, log out, and then log back in. Commissioner, while, while, while they're doing that, they're starting to be adopted. Let's just adopt the minutes while we're waiting. Madam Secretary, do you have the list of the minutes?
Still, but bear with me because it's going to take a couple seconds for you to pull all the documents that you want to call first, because they're not in order.
No, 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 I'm going to do a resolution, I'm just hoping that the minutes.
The minutes we can do, so give me a second, please, thank you. One, two, three. And Melinda, are you all available? Are you ready?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, once again, I apologize, it's kind of crazy today, but thank you for your patience. The meetings of tonight, this evening, is August 10th, 2020, August 13th, 2020, September 24th, 2020, and October 8th, 2020. Mr. Araca?
Yes, can we have a commissioner that can move the minutes, please?
Any commissioner? I hear Commissioner Hodges and Commissioner Dumas second.
Yeah, yeah.
Can I proceed, Chairman?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Commissioners, Commissioner Furman, on the minutes, the fourth, that's a minute, tell you the vote, please.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Rohim?
Yes, lady.
Thank you. Commissioner Minaro?
Yes, Maggie.
Thank you. Commissioner Watkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Levine?
Yes.
And Commissioner Dumas. And last but not least, Commissioner Dumas, do you hear me?
Yeah.
And Chairman Daxton?
Yes.
The four minutes at this meeting on November 12th have been adopted. We can proceed with the resolutions if you like, it's up to you.
Are we at Mr. Maracanda back yet?
Not as of yet, but I'm sorry, sir.
Because we have some resolutions, bear with me one second.
Can we start with 849 Main Street?
Commissioners, we have a resolution for 849 Main Street LLC, which involves a property located at 849 Main Street. 851, 853 Main Street Block 5704, lots 10 and 11. In the B2 zone, there's an application to construct a new four-story mixed-use building. The application was heard on June 29th, 2020. And to conclusion of the presentation, there was a motion made by Commissioner Hodges for denial of the application, which was seconded by Commissioner Mondelli and Commissioner Dumas. It went to a vote, eight in favor of denial, zero against denial. Will someone move that resolution of denial for 849 Main Street LLC?
Some, some of Hodges.
Levine, Rohim, or Watkins?
Which one is it?
You cannot, you did not vote.
Okay.
Levine, Rohim, or Watkins, or Daxton? Is there a second?
A second.
Levine, thank you, sir. Thank you, Commissioner Levine. May I proceed with the vote, Chairman Daxton?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Levine? Commissioner Levine? Commissioner Rohim? Commissioners, please, work with me here. Commissioner Levine, your vote is yes or no on the resolution for 849 Main Street.
Addy, I said it 15 times, yes, yes, yes.
Thank you. I heard you about four right now, but thank you for that. Not being disrespectful, sir, I just do not hear you. It's nothing personal, I, I just can't hear you, sir. Commissioner Rohim, your vote, sir?
Yes.
Commissioner Watkins?
Yes.
Chairman Daxton?
Yes.
The resolution has been adopted for 849 Main Street.
Can I go with Mr., uh, should Hill to con, Dax?
Yes, you can, yes, you can, sir.
Okay. Next resolution is for Hill to con, for property located at 238 17th Avenue, Lot 8618, Lot 2 of the City of Patterson located in the R2 zone. It's an application to construct three-story addition to an existing two-family dwelling. The application was heard on July 23rd, 2020. After conclusion of the presentation.
Oh, wow.
There was a, 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 a motion made by Commissioner Dumas for approval, which was seconded by Commissioner Furman. The matter with the vote, there was three in favor of the application, four against, it was a denial. Will someone move the resolution with the denial for, for con 238 17th Avenue?
Someone move it.
Booted by Commissioner Hodges, do we have a second? And for the record, uh, Chairman Daxton, Commissioner Hodges, Commissioner Levine, and Commissioner Vanara all voted, uh, no on this resolution, they could vote on, I'm sorry, on this application, they could vote on this resolution.
Can we have a second?
Move it, Maggie, move it.
Thank you, Chairman.
Chairman Daxton, second. Order, please.
Commissioners, Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Levine?
Yes.
Commissioner Minaro?
Yes.
And Chairman Daxton?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next, we have Market Street SuperSonics Lounge, LLC. There are the application of property located 658-664 Market Street, Lot 9006, Lot 3. lot nine zero zero six, lot three, the B three zone. The application is to convert commercial spaces to two separate spaces and add second level addition for three two bedroom apartments. The application was heard on August tenth. At the conclusion of the application, there was a motion for denial made by Commissioner Dumas, which was seconded by Commissioner Hodges. And in the motion, there was four in favor of denial, three against denial. Matter was denied. Will somebody move the resolution of denial for Market Street SuperSonics Lounge mat LLC? Someone. Okay, moved by Commissioner Hodges. Do we have a second?
I second that. Commissioner Minaro.
Please hold the board, Madam Secretary.
Okay, um. This is for, this is for denial, am I correct?
Correct. It's Commissioner Dumas, Commissioner Hodges.
Hodges, Minaro, and Rohim. Commissioners, Commissioner Minaro.
Yes, lady.
Thank you. Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Rohim? And Commissioner Dumas? Commissioner Dumas?
It's okay, thank you. We have, we have, we have, we have an opportunity.
Thank you, now, thank you, okay.
Next, next resolution is for Goldie C. Summer, application for a property located at one seventy Sherwin Avenue, block one zero one one, lot twenty-two, the R two zone, the application to construct a three-story two-family dwelling in a vacant lot. At the conclusion of the application, there was a motion made by Commissioner Halal and seconded by Commissioner Dumas uh, for approval. And there were seven votes in, in favor of this application, zero against. Will someone move the resolution of approval for, for, for summer, one seventy Sherwin Avenue? Someone.
Second.
Who was the first motion?
Commissioner Hodges.
Thank you. And second?
Commissioner Furman.
Thank you, Commissioners. Commissioners, Commissioner Furman?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Levine?
Yes.
Commissioner Rohim? Commissioner Rohim?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Watkins?
Yes.
And Chairman Daxton?
Yes.
Next resolution is for Patterson Property Holdings LLC, Power Garden New Jersey Properties LLC. Property located at one twenty-four dash one twenty-eight Putnam Street, lot two nine, two zero, lot fourteen, the R two zone. Application is to convert existing six-family unit into two-family residential unit. At, at this matter was heard on August thirteenth. At the conclusion of the application, there was a motion made by Commissioner Hodges for denial of this application. It was seconded and there's five in favor of denial, two against. Someone move the resolution of denial. Someone. Move by Commissioner Hodges. Do we have a second?
All second.
Hold the board.
The, uh, Chair, uh, Mr. Rocka, I heard a second, but I don't know which Commissioner.
Minaro.
Minaro, thank you very much. When you say yes, I don't know who's speaking, but thank you. Commissioners, Commissioner Furman? Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Levine?
Yes.
Commissioner Rohim? Commissioner Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Minaro?
Yes.
Commissioner Mohin?
Yes.
And Chairman Daxton?
Yes.
This resolution has been adopted.
Next revolu- resolution is the resolution of denial for Hope and Love International Deliverance Industries LLC. Uh, regards the property located at five sixty-eight dash five seventy-two East side of King Street, block three four one, lots nineteen and twenty. Application to convert a two-story industrial warehouse into a household worship and residential zone. At, this was heard on September twenty-fourth. At the conclusion of the application, there was a motion made. I, I apologize, uh. Who made the motion? It's funny, was a motion made and there was three, uh, for approval. There was three votes in favor of the application or against the application. Commissioners Dumas, Commissioner Furman, and Chairman Daxton voted in favor. Commissioner Hodges, Levine, Rohim, and Vanara all voted no. Matter was denied. Will somebody move the resolution of denial? This is Hodges. Someone move.
Thank you.
Commissioner Vanara will second.
Thank you. Commissioners, Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Levine?
Yes.
Commissioner Rohim? Commissioner Minaro?
Yes.
Commissioner Rohim?
Yes, lady.
Thank you. This resolution has been adopted.
Commissioners, the last resolution, uh, is a resolution of approval for, for denial, a ruling for property located at four seventy-four, tenth Avenue, block eight three one one, lot four, in the R two zone. Application to demolish a one-family dwelling, construct a three-story seven-man multi-family dwelling. Matter was heard on October eighth. Conclusion of the application, there was a, a motion made by Commissioner Dumas for the approval of the application with the revision of thirteen required parking spaces instead of eighteen, with the other conditions that were detailed on the record. Commissioner Furman seconded the motion. There were seven in favor, zero against. Will somebody move this resolution, please? Someone.
Commissioner Minaro will second.
Please hold the board.
Commissioners, Commissioner Furman? Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Levine?
Yes.
Commissioner Rohim?
Yes.
Commissioner Minaro?
Yes.
Commissioner Minaro?
Yes, lady.
Thank you. Commissioner Furman? Commissioner Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Furman?
We have an opportunity to move the resolution, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Chairman Daxton?
Yes.
Thank you.
If no more measures, if no more resolutions, let's, let's recall the matter. Mr. Maricat?
Okay, we're, we're ready to go. I apologize. We had to change devices here. We're ready to go on behalf of the applicant, applicant, uh, Glen Shahu, uh, property. Uh, as indicated on your, on your agenda, as well as our application documents, is three ninety-two dash three ninety-four River Street. Uh, as per, uh, Mr. Paparazzi's review as well. This application is, uh, pretty straightforward, uh, application this evening. Uh, we're looking to legalize and, and obtain this sort of occupancy uh, for a existing structural, existing and occupied four-family dwelling that still is taxed as a three-family dwelling. So technically, we are looking for use in bulk variances and site plan approval in the MU zone. Uh, this is a property, just by way of quick background, and I'll call the applicant first and I will put on the record his background in terms of his ownership as well. Uh, this is a site that has always maintained multiple residential units. And there was also a great deal of late work and research done with regards to the background of this site. My client acquired the property in March of two thousand seventeen. Uh, at that time, he was advised through real estate and, uh, or counsel that represented him at the time that he was acquiring a four-family building. Nonetheless, the tax records do speak for themselves that they still show it as a three. And he acquired with four rental units being occupied and he has continued that, uh, going forward ever since. Uh, the, the issue came to his attention. The issue came to his attention only when the Department of Community Affairs State of New Jersey came for their, for their five-year inspection. And they advised him that they, he need to, he needed to bring this property uh, into conformity, uh, in terms of the city and the state records. Uh, we did provide counsel and planning staff and, uh, planner with the documentation that the fire department, uh, has, has this property up to, up to code in terms of compliance. And also that the state of New Jersey has it registered as a four-family dwelling. And my client has no, has no violations, uh, related to the state of New Jersey. Uh, so moving forward, uh, it only gave his attention when the DCA inspection came most recently and advised him that he needed to, you know, make the necessary application to the City of Patterson. He did not receive any violations and he immediately took those steps, obtained architectural, uh, plans. They did have earlier counsel and the application was somewhat stalled for a while. But we, we got it back actively on the agenda and moved forward with revised plans. Uh, so what we'd like to do, uh, is just at this point, I'll call, uh, the applicant and we'll address, uh, a little bit of that background. And then I'll also have him address a couple of questions that Mr. Paparazzi raises that he can answer. And then, of course, we'll do our regular professional testimony as well. So I'd like to call the applicant at this time.
Give us a second. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony? You're about to give us the truth, the whole truth, and not give us the truth?
I do.
Stay your calling for the record?
Mary Lynn Shahu.
Uh, Mr. Shahu, uh, could you, uh, advise the board, uh, this time, you are the owner of a property that's on this application, is that right?
Right, yeah.
And you've owned it, I indicated in my openings since about March of two thousand seventeen.
Right.
And you heard my opening comments, uh, just a minute ago?
Right.
And that is accurate. You brought this with a clear understanding, at least you thought that it was a four-family, right?
Right.
Uh, and, uh, you proceeded in that manner, you operated the building, you had a DCA inspection, and that's when the issue came to your attention about the city records not being in compliance?
Right.
Okay, so what we, and then you did retain professionals and that's why we're here.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, what I'd also like to do for you is, uh, indicate that since you were owner, you did make some applications for permits with the City of Patterson. You did some work to approve, upgrade it? The building?
Yeah.
What did you do exactly?
I did, um, the stair, the rear, um, egress stairs for the, uh, for the platforms of the exits on, um, exiting for the tenants on the second and third floor. They had a, they had a, a old, um, a steel platform deck to exit to the back of the house where they park. And, um, the permit was to demo that and construct a new, uh, pressure-free, the deck, uh, wood deck.
So you brought it more up to code?
Yeah.
Okay, and, um, and at that point, when you pulled the permits and forms from the City of Patterson, which I provided to the city staff, uh, showed as a four-family?
Yeah.
That is correct?
Yep.
So you, you explained that to them and that's the way they treated it as a four-family when you applied for a permit? Okay, um, I also wanted to commission to be aware of, and I've already submitted, uh, to the staff and council, uh, the old Clement Shaw record on this property, which shows four units. Of course, the print is very light. This goes back to the nineteen fifties. But, um, the upper left-hand corner of the old Clement Shaw report actually showed that it's store front plus three apartments. So apparently, there's always been four units. At some point, since around nineteen sixty, that store front was apparently converted to a residential use at some point. I'm not sure exactly when that occurred. But building permits were taken out within the last couple of years and the building department uh, actually treated in their documentation as a four-family, but the tax records did not match that. Uh, I've also submitted some other exhibits which, um, indicate of, you know, fate achieving the building, uh, looking at this thing as a multi-family building side by side with other multi-families or factors, a six-family to the left and the right, is that correct?
Yes, correct.
Both six and six?
Six, yes, uh, the, the family on the left was just disrupted.
The six family?
The six family to the left, the right, right after I got my house, it, it was zero lot, no parking, no nothing.
Okay, there's a six family on the other side?
There's a six family on the other side as well, correct.
Okay, uh, so with respect to that, I think you can give us the background of, of why you're here essentially and the background of how the city records reflect this property. Uh, and, uh, again, you, you had counsel and you assumed you had a four-family until you learned otherwise, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, we're going to be calling your architect as an expert witness as well. Uh, but of course, that's all that happened with the chairman of the applicant at this time. But he will also be available after the architect if necessary. Uh, and again, he's available for any questions at this time.
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, sir, but right now, are, are there four families being, uh, utilizing the, the house?
Four family?
Yes, yes.
So there are four families in now?
There's four apartments there, yes. And I, I got it. I purchased a house with existing four tenants, four apartments getting used, full, fully occupied.
And, uh, also, I noticed, Mr. Paparazzi, I know you, you asked a couple of questions about, about the, uh, the status of the, the building with, uh, mailboxes. What, can you explain that?
Yes, yes, um, so Alan brought that up. So there's four mailboxes that you look in front of the house where they are. There's four and there's one that's mine. So for the four units plus mine, I'll put on their owner, uh, to indicate it's mine.
In case you get any mail assigned correctly, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so you, so you don't live here, right?
No, no, I didn't.
Okay. Okay, and, uh, the, the, the four units are listed out, people are actually, uh, uh, there now, right?
Correct, correct, they are.
Okay, uh, I, I assumed, uh, based on my inspection, that there are children in, in, in the, uh, some of the units anyway.
Correct, that, that's true, yes.
Okay. All right, uh, that's all the information I have for, for, uh, the applicant.
Mr. Paparazzi, for my night, I know you, you would make reference also uh, the fact that there was a garage in the rear. That's a storage garage that one of the tenants uses. There's not any sort of businesses on the site, but in the rear, there isn't a auto repair shop to one side of the building, is that right?
Yeah, yeah, my garage is to the right of that shop and it's white. The, the tire shop is to the left of that, which is, which is owned from, um, the other building to the right of my property. But it's, it's, it's located on the corner, so that his, his shop is, is on the Putnam Street area.
That's where it's from, so I'm putting them street.
Yeah, and my, my street is on three ninety-two, but if you drive around, that's where you reach my driveway. So my driveway is actually.
On, on Putnam Street side, yeah. It's an unusual, the, the design in a sense, yeah, yeah, definitely. But I want to be sure, Gary, I know you asked us about that in your review, uh, regarding that issue.
I was at the site and I had the survey. And looking at the garage, they were doing, uh, some oil mechanic work there. But I, I had garage where you, where you have like a seven-foot driveway from the garage. You have about seven feet from the garage in the property line to get into the back of your building. And that garage is the middle way of that little driveway. And, and that garage, they were doing oil work when I was there. I'll tell you, I saw, uh, I was actually employed because of, uh, I, there was a revision.
But I, 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 I'm sorry, I got it, Gary.
So somebody's doing working in that garage. The garage door was open. Both days, it was warm. Both days, they were working on car in front of the garage and in the garage. I don't know if you know, but somebody's working on automobile there.
Right, but there's no one, there's no business being operated. That's your tenant?
Yeah, yeah, that, that might be true. They might be, they might be working on it quite often, but there, there's not, there's no business getting used there. That's, that's the tenant occupying that garage for use of the storage or he might be starting his vehicle there.
That's your, that's one of the resident, that's one of the residential tenants?
Yes, so there's no business, not like that, no.
Okay, all right, thank you, that's all.
So they remind that tenant that he cannot report of oil, like oil repair work as any mechanical work on the open space at all.
Okay, and that's all that happened, Mr. Chairman, for the applicant. Any commissioners? Can you give this news?
There are, uh, good evening, uh, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I have a question.
Hello?
Um, yes, hi, uh, good evening, uh, for how long?
Uh, I'm sorry, I was getting a phone call. This is on my device. Um, how old did I lo- own it?
Yes.
It's March of two thousand seventeen, yeah, early two thousand seventeen, I, please, March.
March of two thousand seventeen, yes. And uh, my second question is, when you pulled this property, were you aware that this was not a, a full-story building?
No, I, as I indicated in my opening and as, as his earlier testimony indicates, he clearly was not advised of that. He only heard of it when the DCA came to do their multi-family inspection.
Thank you, Mr. Maracanda.
Not a problem. Yeah, I did not represent him. I, hopefully, if I was, he would have had the full facts in front of him.
Commissioner Manara?
You're the commissioner.
Yes, yes, Chairman. This is Commissioner Manara.
Hello?
Thank you. Um, just a question, I was just looking over uh Gary's um capable here, and does, is, are the property taxes and the sewer charges all up to date now?
They are, we probably wrote that down, yes. We did provide that to his level. They were, they were never behind. What happened was, we had submitted a tax disorder certification a while back, the matter sat on the agenda when he had previous counsel. So when I came into the picture not too long ago, I provided the board secretary even again today, another update that everything is current.
Thank you, Mr. Maracanda.
You're welcome.
Any other commissioner? Mr. Rocker, can you open it up to the public, please?
Yes. To members of the public, if you have any questions on the applicant, with regards to the testimony he just gave you, please call nine seven three, three two one, one five seven nine. And when prompted to do so, enter the meeting ID number seven one one, six eight zero, 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 seven, one. And once again, the phone number is nine seven three, three two one, one five seven nine. And the meeting ID number seven one one, six eight zero, 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 seven, one. We'll give a few moments to see if anybody calls.
Thank you, Mr. Rocker. I will give it a couple of minutes. As of now, we do not have any, but I will check with the IT staff. Thank you very much for your patience. We have no corners at this time. We may proceed.
Okay, Mr. Maracanda, your left foot, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My second question is, Mr. Seider Bustamante, the architect's site plan.
Please raise your right hand? I don't see her. Do you swear or print the testimony? You're about to give us the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Mr. Bustamante?
Mr. Shahu Bustamante, are you there?
No, we're looking for Mr. Bustamante.
How's it going?
I'm trying to call you, I don't know.
Can you check with my IT staff a little?
I called my cell phone.
I think he's gone.
I'm gonna try to reach out to him a minute ago.
Okay.
It's calling the sheriff. Maybe this phone, yeah, my phone, I'm trying to hold it, yeah.
Through the chair, this is Commissioner Watkins. Can I have a, can I ask a question to the owner?
I got perfectly fine on our end, yep.
Mr. Maracanda, before you proceed, can we have the number so that our, our IT staff can connect him to the main?
Okay, we're trying, we're trying. This is, I can give you his phone number if you wish.
Thank you.
Nine seven three.
Not over here, I'm sorry, not over here, I'll call.
Can I proceed with my question?
Yes, ma'am, you can.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Shahu? Um, do you have before and after photos of the work you did in the back of the house?
I, I do.
I'm not sure if we submitted those to the board.
We have submitted, but.
We, we could probably provide them, but it was just some patio reinforcement. Nothing that changed the, the footprint of the building or anything of that nature. And it was by permits and we submitted the permits to the uh, to the board staff and board council commissioner. Uh, let's see if I actually have the photographs.
I uh, made them to Mr. Paparazzi and, and show them.
There's one over here, that's the stairs.
We have one photograph, which is in our possession, which shows the stairs, but this was all safety and fire code compliance with the uh city building department. Commissioner, I, I think that, I don't know how we can send this photo, but it doesn't add to the addition, but it does show the, the stairs, which are, you know, made safer for the tenants.
Mr. Maracanda, were these the photos that I got about the window?
It's not part of those, no. This is why I did not anticipate needing this photo.
All right. Tell it to Mr. Rocker.
So is that a present photo?
Yes, it is, yeah. That's very recent, that's your present condition, yes. Now, the only upgrade he did to the building was the safety measure.
About two, three years.
About two or three years ago.
Can, can we, the commissioners in the public, see that photo, please?
I don't know how we can do it. Would we have to send it to Maggie or to uh the staff?
Can you hold it up? Yeah, can you just hold it up? Will that help?
Put it in front of the camera, put it in front of the camera, shoot that one.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, this is, I printed it out in black and white, it's kind of difficult to see. Well, that's, that's, that's not a driveway and I don't see where it is. The stairs are right here, right, um.
A little more to the front?
It was hard to, is that right there? That, the, that's the deck, the new deck. It was a, it was a iron deck, really rusted out before, I, I, I had to change that. Uh, requested by the, the um, the state inspector.
Right.
And found out it was a, it was registered as a four family. And this was another additional issue, a bit, another big issue that has to fix right away, because uh those stairs were really bad.
So the state inspector, when he came and looked at your building as a four family, said to take care of this, that the prior owner had not done it?
Yes, he gave me a lot of violations, but, which were all resolved, all, all of them were mainly minor. But this was one of the bigger ones, along with uh making that fourth unit legal.
With the city of Patterson, it wasn't able to stay.
Yeah, it was legal with the state.
He just wanted you to get the tax office to comply with that.
Comply with that, it didn't match up, so, I don't know.
So you're saying that it was metal before and it's wood now?
Yes, I have, I have clear um, clear new photos of the whole incident. But we just never submitted that. I don't know if there's a way I could do it on this app, but, but yeah, that's the only, it was on my permit. Uh, before we trench and before uh the construction began, everything was um photos and uh the inspector, he saw it uh present as well, so uh.
And the state come, um, asked you on that?
Yeah, the state inspector saw the previous deck and he advised me to change it to a new deck. And it was all, it was all done properly.
And he, he said you were in full compliance?
Full compliance, yeah.
Okay. I apologize, I didn't, did not anticipate needing that photo, commissioners, but, you know, we, we did the best we could with it.
That, that's the only permit I pulled.
That's the only permit he pulled.
Okay, so my question was, was that, is that wood now? That's up there, the banners are wooden now?
Yes. Wood, yeah.
Okay. Yes. Okay. Ma- ma'am inspector, I'm gonna reach out to the architect by phone, or do you want the IT, let me try calling first if I may.
I gave the plans to the IT staff, so they're trying to.
Give me one minute, okay? Just some wriggles for you for one minute.
Chairman Daxton, do you give permission to begin this meeting?
Goodness, Maracanda.
Thank you very much.
Everyone can take a three-minute break, Chairman, to go to the ladies' room, if necessary?
Yes, yes.
Chairman Daxton?
Yes.
It appears that your phone has a lot of static.
Is that where?
Okay, I understand.
Okay, um, ma- Mr. Chairman, I'm back on, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Mr. Chairman, I apologize. My architect, he's, he's gonna be coming back on. What he thought was that the entire calendar was adjourned, he misunderstood the uh calendar call for whatever reason. But he's coming back on in, hopefully in about two minutes. I apologize. Did you hear me, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry?
Yes, he did hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Sorry about that. He should be back on very shortly. He misunderstood the, the procedure, I guess, when the calendar call occurred.
I hear your conversation. Keep me yourself, thank you. Are we ready to proceed, Chairman Daxton?
Is you, is the architect ready?
Maracanda, is your architect ready? I'll check with the IT staff, sure.
We're, we're checking right now, see, we're trying to get him back on. Give, give me another minute, I apologize. He somehow misunderstood the conversation that were going on at the calendar call. I had told him we were the only case being heard tonight, and he must have misunderstood when the adjournments took place. But we reached out to him and he's trying to get back to his device.
We are trying to locate him as well, Mr. Maracanda. I did send him a connection this afternoon. But as you said, things happen, but I did reach out with IT. But because of the plan, his app, his, his information is looped into his office. I don't have his cell number.
We, we don't have a cell. We have a, we have a cell for one of his associates and we reached out to him already.
Right, so we're gonna give Chairman Daxton between, it's your decision, give him a few minutes by minute, but. Stop, Mr. Rocker.
Your testimony should not be lengthy. Get in touch with him yet or no? He doesn't think this phone will lock on now.
Chairman Daxton, how would you like to proceed? I'm trying to reach him. I understand Mr. Maracanda as well. But it is eight in the hour.
Bad as this. This, Mr. Maracanda, it's uh do we, do we need his testimony?
Mr. Chairman, we've tried every way possible through his uh, through his associate whose cell phone we have. Apparently, Mr. Bustamante must somehow be out of reach in terms of that, his device, I don't know why, I, I apologize. I don't understand how he misunderstood what transpired at the beginning of the meeting. I really apologize, I've never had this kind of thing occur before. Um, I wonder if Gary would permit us to um discuss the plan without the professional testimony or with counsel, or do you wish to carry the matter?
This, this, Mr. Rocker and Mr. Paparazzi. Now.
Paparazzi, I might just send you something that I received before you proceed?
Chairman, Chair, I would, I would defer to the, to our planner. I mean, for, if the planner's okay with it, the applicant can proceed as powerful without having that extra testimony, but I, I think I certainly have questions, so I would defer to the applicant.
Well, uh, Chairman and Mr. Paparazzi, yeah, the, the, there are some deficiencies on the architect's plan, uh uh
The only issue, the deficiencies that you would like corrected?
Well, uh, he, he can't correct them if, if we proceed, I, I mean.
No, 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 I know, I know the applicant. I'm asking you, the deficiency, there's something that you would like to discuss with the, with the professional to correct.
Yes, yeah.
Uh, that, that, that's it. We can't, we can't proceed.
Okay, uh, I ask the board's indulgence as to, as to the possibility of giving this a much shorter adjournment than is normal, uh, because I believe the architect's testimony will be relatively brief. It's a very straightforward case with no new, no project development per se.
Uh, the problem is, the problem is, in the, in this new virtual world, everything takes a long time. So unless, unless you have something that you'd be willing to put this in front of, we, we couldn't commit.
I was hoping possibly to be an add-on to one of the agendas with two cases. If we could, if Maggie could check and see if there's any that look to be, uh, relatively short matters. I, I don't know. It's up to you guys. I apologize.
Again, we're, 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 we haven't made it pass through, uh, two applications in a night in the virtual world. Unless, one of the two is yours, and again, unless one of the two is yours, that we can jump ahead of yours, the, the, the...
Yeah, I feel very uncomfortable bumping another applicant's already scheduled, because people have been waiting for so long, you know, on the agenda. Uh, so I, I can't defer anybody, you know, directly at this time. I would ask the board secretary to look at the agenda. She knows the cases as well as I do, to see if you would consider as a brief add-on on one night before the end of the year.
Mr. Maracanda, uh, uh, this is not on the architect, but, uh, and I know you've drawn a lot of closings in your time. Can you just look at, can you just look at the survey that you submitted? I just wanna go over that one for one minute.
Right, sure. I know you said there were some deficiencies on the survey, and I hope that second survey that came in, you saw a revised one, right?
Well, you said the same one. That's the one I had. I, I had a legalized one.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Look, look at it. Uh, so I can walk you through for a minute.
Yeah, sure.
Uh, if you have it in front of you, there are more buildings and distances.
I am.
Uh, there are no offsets on the garage, and, and there's two offsets on the house, but I don't know if the house is encroaching or clear, because he doesn't say whether it's, uh, south west, or southeast, or northeast, or northwest, out of two numbers. He has no dimensions on the building. I actually want to measure the garage to show that that space, uh, to get to the back of the house is less than seven feet. Uh, quite frankly, as a member of the state board of professional engineering and answer lawyers, this is not even the, the, to regulation.
Okay, I, I appreciate that. I appreciate that very much. And I, I, I was under the impression, because I got in this case late, that a revised survey had been sent to you directly. I just got word that the architect is logging on now, if you're willing to hear him. And if we could, and if you could make any survey, uh, amendments or conditions, or we, whatever way you wanna handle that, I'm open to that.
Yeah, it, it would be. If you look at it, he also has three part beginnings, which is...
I saw that. I, I know, I saw those original issues.
Yeah, I mean, uh, uh, quite frankly, I, I, I don't know what, what your client paid for the survey when she gets her money back, but really, it, it hasn't gone over. He actually hasn't gone over, so I clarify what the architect has done. Uh, I mean, what he's proposing, you know, but I just consider that. It does nothing to be for the meeting, but...
Okay.
But, you know, if, if, if we're going to head, uh, and, and the, the architect's here, that hasn't been, been before, sign off.
No, I, I agree a hundred percent.
Okay.
All right, do we have, do we have the...
I know, we, we think we have the architect back on, if you could possibly hear him.
If we're here.
So, I... Is, is he ready to go, Mr. Maracanda?
We, we don't see him yet, but Maggie, are you seeing that he's back on?
He's there.
He's there.
I'll read everybody, Mr. Bustamante.
Okay?
Are you on, sir?
Yes, I am.
Okay, I, I don't know what happened, but apparently you had the impression the meeting was postponed, and that was certainly not the case. I, but I apologize to the board already.
Yeah, just move on.
Yeah. That's what we're doing, we're really, really, we're ready to hear from you.
Yeah, go, go on, just do it.
Can you please raise your right hand? You saw our property testimony about to reveal the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Say your full name for the record.
Caesar Bustamante, architect.
Mr. Bustamante, tell us your professional background and licensing.
I am registered in, uh, New York State since nineteen eighty-four, and I'm registered in New Jersey since nineteen eighty-five.
Okay, good.
I do commercial and residential, uh, work in both states.
Okay, and are you licensed currently in good standing?
Yes, I am.
And you appeared before municipal or place judicial boards in the past?
Yes, I have.
Uh, so, okay, so I ask the chairs where you can check this. Mr. Chairman?
The board, the board accepts your credentials.
Thank you, thank you very much. Mr. Bustamante, I don't know if you heard earlier your testimony or not. When did you log on? Right after the calendar call?
Uh, now, I see you, you guys, we're going over some of the, uh, other, uh, I guess, uh, here that you had previously, that you legal...
You did not hear our testimony, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so we, we covered all the background of this property in terms of Mr., uh, so who's, uh, purchased and all the conditions, what the present status is, but I need you to go through your site plan, explain the current conditions of the building, and how it's occupied in terms of the, uh, variance that are created, okay?
Okay, I mean presently, uh, the, this is, no, what he's existing as is, it's a, it's a four-family and a three-family zone, uh, unfortunately, so that's, it's, it's legalized.
In an MU zone, sir.
All right, in a MU zone, but, I mean, the triangles were various to get the fourth apartment variance, so that, uh...
Right, legalized. The tax records show it as a three, that's why we're here.
Correct.
Okay, proceed.
I mean, the lot's narrow, and, you know, it's, it's a long, narrow lot, and I guess that's part of the problem too. We don't have enough parking, uh, you know, the floor parties would require so many number of parking spots, and we just don't have that on there.
Right, that's all, that's all based on pre-existing conditions and the structure of the building side by side with other multi-families, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, go ahead.
So, I mean, now, given the, the nature of the lot, we were just trying to see if we could, if the board would grant this variance so that they can proceed and have a fourth apartment.
Legalized.
Legalized.
Right, okay, um, the, so the, the city planner will have some questions for you about your zoning chart that has to be addressed. Uh, and again, you're not proposing any addition to the building whatsoever, is that right?
That's correct. Don't, nothing is as is.
Okay, and based on your interior analysis of the site, the, the existing four units already exist and are occupied, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, Mr. Paparazzi, we're ready for you.
Yeah, I like, okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Bustamante, are you able to put your, uh, your sheet on the, uh, on the screen, T1? I, I believe one of the commissioners had asked about that, 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 that photo on the, the, uh, the front page.
Can you... Hold on, let me, let me go to my computer and scroll into here.
It was up earlier.
Yeah, it was this year. He was with me, and then he, uh, he took off as well, thinking that the, the meeting had gone.
Okay, so, I know your associate was assisting you, but hopefully you can repost that, uh, that site plan up. If not, I would ask the board secretary to do so.
Okay, let me just, let me see if I have it here. Uh, here we go. Can I just press it up? Yeah, okay, here it is. Let me set the screen up.
Hey, can you see it? Yeah, yeah, I can. Uh, if, if you can blow up the, the photos to ruffle the survey, I believe Commissioner Watkins wanted to see the, uh, uh, renovation on the back of the porch. Thank you. Okay, that was from Commissioner Watkins. That's the new, uh, uh, back porch that were, were, uh, re-done from the steel. Uh, he just took it off.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I...
Yeah, leave, leave that off now. Okay, uh, uh, Mr. Bustamante, uh, yeah, yeah, let's go over your zoning chart. Uh, you have the wrong lot, you know, yeah?
Okay.
You have the wrong two on the side yard. There's a, there's a code for lots under thirty-seven and a half. You have the, the wrong minimum combined side yard. You have the wrong minimum rad yard. You have the wrong maximum lot coverage, and you have the wrong stories. And your calculation for floor area ratio is one point five. You have it as one point zero two five. Uh, the residential, they count the basement, so, uh, the floor area ratio, which is a D variance, is also included in this, although it's, it, it existing, it, it, it is a, a, a D variance that's pre-existing.
Uh, I'll make the directions that is on the chart, and make sure that it's plausible to some requirements.
Okay, now, on your first floor plan, on the, uh, the one-bedroom unit, you don't show, you don't want the bathroom.
Oh, it could have been a flaw issue. Let me, let me go look at it. I sometimes, you know, it's nice to catch, does it work for you, but it, it doesn't work like it should.
I should be one. I should be one.
Yeah, hold on, A1. Uh, let me just see. Okay. A1.
You don't, you don't find, uh, the, or the, I'm not sure, the one-bedroom unit. Uh, uh, right, okay. To your, to your, to your, uh, to the right of the screen. Slide it over. Keep sliding, okay? You see the bathroom has, has a door. Behind the storage?
Right, great. Can I see it?
Okay, you don't need to put the door on.
I'll do that. It's over here, okay. Yeah, it could have been a flaw issue, uh, on the side, just didn't pick up on it. Okay, well, not a problem, you do that.
All right, uh, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, e- everything else is pre-existing, uh, you know, I mean, uh, other than his changes a- a- and, uh, noting the, uh, floor area ratio variance, uh, and, and also now the survey for, uh, uh, Mr. Maracanda. Everything, everything is pre-existing.
We'll address the surveys to immediately, and I know Mr. Bustamante will correct this zoning chart, will submit to Mr. Paparazzi, you know, quickly as possible.
You don't have to submit it to me. You submit it to Maggie, the five companies, if it is approved, but, but, I, I will sign off on it after everything is corrected, if it is approved, okay?
Very good, thank you.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman, for the architect.
Paparazzi, a quick question.
Any commissioner set a question up for the architect?
What was on with the bathroom?
Uh, uh, I'm sorry, Maggie didn't hear you.
Architectural number, the, which, what, what number is that, so I can follow up on that?
A1. A, A1, the one-bedroom unit, yes.
Thank you. Other than that, so the zoning chart, am I correct?
Uh, that's correct. He has the, uh, he has the list of the floor area ratios are pre-existing D variances.
D variances, right?
Yes. Everybody mute their mics. Everybody mute their mics.
At this moment, please, remind us, so we are done. The only people that should have, is Chairman Daxton, Mr. Maracanda, and our attorney. Gary Paparazzi, if you have anything else, you have to say it, sir.
That's all I have, uh, Mr. Chairman, for the architect. If there are any questions, if there are any...
Does any commissioner have questions? Marco, could you open it up to the public, please?
Members of the public, if you have any questions on the architect, with regards to his testimony just given, please call nine seven three, three two one, one five seven nine, and one proctor two, and at your meeting, I'd be over seven one one, six eight zero, 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 seven one. Just give it a few moments, see if anybody calls. I'm really pleased you mute their mics, I do hear backup sound.
We have no one at this time from the public, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Maracanda, can you call the next witness, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No further witnesses at this time. The applicant is ready to close, if you permit.
Okay.
Thank you very much. First of all, I apologize for the technical difficulties. Very unusual for that to happen, I could say. Uh, I appreciate the board hopefully taking this application into a positive consideration, or giving it a positive consideration, I should say. This is a, a property where the applicant in good faith purchased. Uh, as you can see, uh, from the street shape, these are all multi-families along the MU zone, with some small spattery of small businesses along River Street, near Platinum Street, uh, intersection. No changes proposed. The applicant has upgraded the safety conditions on the site in accordance with the state DCA requirements. He was only alerted to this when he complied with the DCA request to make sure that his property matched up in the city with the state. We were able to find old city records, as like we talked about, and submitted to staff and council, showing that there were in fact four separate units going back sixty years, one of which was a storefront that somewhere became residential many years ago. And also, the fact that this applicant pulled permits in the building department, considered it as a four-family when they allowed the permits to be pulled for safety purposes only. And, uh, I believe he's been a good landlord. He's maintained the property, there are no penny violations. And we asked the, the board's consideration in allowing us to legalize this for our families, so really, we, basically what we do is ask the board tonight to continue the status quo. No proposed additions whatsoever in that area. Thank you.
Gary? Yeah, uh, Chairman and Commissioners, uh, as the testimony, uh, was heard, there are all four families there, although the building is being taxed as a two-family, and that is why he's here tonight. Uh, thus creating the Uvariance and the floor area ratio D variances. Now, again, these are all pre-existing because of, I guess, some unregistered ring of, of the, uh, the fourth family. And the parking variance, again, which is pre-existing, is eight spaces, uh, required, and one space, uh, is, uh, proposed. And that is that space in the garage where I thought the auto mechanic work is being done. That being said, if there is a motion to approve, uh, I, I, uh, would, a request that is made with a, a survey that is with current regulations and the revisions to the architect's plan. That, that was all I have. If there are any questions, questions, then the chairman, I will be glad to answer. Thank you.
Well, deck, can we have a motion, please?
Mr. President, this is, uh, Commissioner Furman.
Go ahead, Chris, there.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, be, be, for, first, uh, my, my motion, um, for the record, um, can I, can I say something?
Uh, Commissioner Furman, can you please put on your video, I'll...
Yeah, I'm, I'm, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry about that.
No, it's okay. I just, I just wanted to do the votes and... No, it's okay. I just, I just wanted to do the votes and motions. This is what the panel can say.
Before people are taking the most motion, uh, for the record, can I say something?
Go ahead.
It's always nice to see people doing things for our betterment in the right, in the right way. I don't feel much, uh, my vote is yes for approval.
I am going to read with your permission, uh, Commissioner Furman, the motion to approve this application. Am I correct?
That's right.
Thank you. Um, motion to approve this application is made by Commissioner Furman that the application of DTF Holdings LLC concerning the premises at one eighty-two dash one eighty-eight East Thirty-third Street, block eighty-five oh four, lot five.
It's not that property. It's not that property.
I'm sorry. Excuse me. You're right. I'm sorry. Read the other one. Mr. Maracanda, I'm sorry. Okay.
I'm sorry. I want you to keep going, that's all.
No, that's okay. I just realized it as well, but I really apologize. So let me begin again. Motion to approve. Commissioner Furman makes the motion that the application of Mary Glenn Shuhu, three ninety-two, three ninety-four River Street, block twenty-nine oh two, lot three, concerning the premises at three ninety-two River Street to use or to convert a three-family into a four-family dwelling on an irregular shaped lot. The first floor will contain two apartments, one one-bedroom, two-bedroom apartment and one one-bedroom apartment. The second and third floors will contain a three-bedroom apartment on each floor. The applicant is providing two parking spaces of the eight parking spaces that are required. This is for use bulk, D variance to site plan in MU zone. And any amendments of the conditions for approval, which were mentioned previously regarding the survey changes and the zoning changes? Am I correct in saying so? FAR experiments?
Uh, I, I believe, uh, Commissioner Furman, uh, the, the motion would be to approve with the stipulation that the survey and the architect's plan be revised correctly, right?
Thank you. Okay. And subject to the review and approval, if applicable, of the following, but not limited to the city engineer, state county planning board for state county engineer, HGP Soil Conservation District and Building Coles of the state of New Jersey. So he does move. Is there a second?
This is Commissioner Inao. I'll second it.
Thank you, Commissioner Inao. Mr. Chairman Daxton, may I proceed with the vote?
Yes, go up the roll, please.
Thank you.
And, and, and commissioners, can you please put on your videos before you vote?
Get out your mouth. Get out your mouth.
Go ahead, my secretary.
Thank you. I just wanted to give him a few moments. Commissioner Rohim, are you there, sir? Can I see you or you're calling as well?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, great. Thank you. So I will call the role commissioners, Commissioner Furman. I didn't hear you, sir.
Yes, hi, this is our Commissioner Furman. My vote is yes for approval.
Thank you. Commissioner Hodges.
Yes.
Commissioner Levine.
Yes.
Commissioner Rohim.
Yes.
Commissioner Inao.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Watkins.
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Dunas.
Yes.
Thank you. And Chairman Daxton.
Yes.
The application of Mary Glenn Shuhu, three ninety-two River Street has been approved. Thank you very much and have a nice evening.
Misses, thank you for your patience and consideration. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Chairman, motion to close?
Yes, we need a chair.
Enjoy your weekend. Good night.
Thank you.